Good morning. I'd like to call this meeting to order for the Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors' regular session for August 29, 2023. Roll call, please, Mr. Veder.
Hall?
Here.
Little? Schwartz?
Here.
Treoka?
Here.
Layland?
Here. Would everyone please join us for the moment of silence to reflect on our actions today? Thank you. Would you please join us now for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number one is the agenda received as proposed or as amended.
So moved.
Second. And moved in seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, agenda is received. Public comments, is there anyone in the audience today that would like to speak on something that is not on today's agenda? Seeing none. Anyone on Zoom? Doesn't look like there as well. So, item three is the Proclamations, and this is a resolution to proclaim the month of September as Hunger Action Month.
So moved.
Second.
And moved in seconded, and I was gonna say, Barb, did you want to say something before? I was gonna say, or Grant could read the proclamation, whichever you'd like, or you can.
I don't have it in front of me, so I'll just, again, thank the Board of Supervisors for the support they've given the Food Bank over the years. This last year, I'm happy to say that we closed the meal gap in our service area. We provided, the meal gap was 5.1 million meals, we provided 7.3 million meals. We had almost 30,000 volunteer hours, and we provided over 90,000 backpacks, bags, backpacks to 147 sites in northeast Iowa. Our Kids Cafe program provided food to 13 sites and over 42,000 meals and snacks, and this, during the summer, we provided 17 sites with over 28,000 meals and snacks. The one program that the Board of Supervisors traditionally funds is Cedar Valley Food Pantry, and unfortunately, in the last year, we saw an increase of almost 33% in the number of households we served on average every month. This is, I believe, directly attributed to the disaster proclamation going away and the SNAP benefits being caused, being reduced in April of 2022. But the Food Bank is here, we can't do what we do without community support, we collaborate, educate, and advocate for the food insecure person, and I want to thank you for the support that you give us on an ongoing basis, and I ask you to take some sort of action against hunger and challenge you to do that. There's lots of opportunities to engage. You know, September is Hunger Action Month, and it's a time to raise awareness, but also get involved in your community and do something about food insecurity, because unfortunately for many, it's not going away. But thank you for what you've given us in the past, we will be submitting a proposal, and we ask you to look favorably upon that as well. So, on behalf of the Food Bank Board and staff, thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for the efforts that you work so hard to do in our community, so thank you and your staff. And then, Grant, did you want to read the proclamation? Mrs. Barb didn't. Thank you.
Whereas hunger and poverty are issues of vital concern in Blackhawk County, and that in northeast Iowa, over 29,000 people face hunger, and almost 9,000 are children who do not know where their next meal will come from. Whereas Blackhawk County is committed to taking steps to combat hunger in every part of our community, to provide additional resources that those in Blackhawk County need. And whereas Blackhawk County is committed to working with the Northeast Iowa Food Bank, a member of the Feeding America Nationwide Network of Food Banks, in educating people about the role and importance of food banks in addressing hunger and raising awareness of the need to devote more resources and attention to hunger issues. And whereas more individuals in Blackhawk County rely on food provided by the members of the Northeast Iowa Food Bank annually, and whereas the members of the Northeast Iowa Food Bank distributed more than 7.3 million meals to northeast Iowa residents in 2022 through its network of food pantries, member agencies, shelters, and other community organizations. And whereas the month of September has been designated Hunger Action Month in order to bring attention to food insecurity in our communities and to inspire the public in the fight to end hunger by taking action, including volunteer shifts, social media shares, and donations, to ensure nobody has to make an impossible choice between food and other necessities like medicine, utilities, or childcare. And whereas food banks across the country, including the Northeast Iowa Food Bank, will host numerous events throughout the month of September to bring awareness and help end hunger in their local communities. Now therefore, we, the Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors, do hereby recognize September 2023 as Hunger Action Month in Blackhawk County, and we call this observance to the attention of our citizens.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
And apologize for, I was gonna say, it's like Tom had texted me that he couldn't hear us at all, and so we're good, okay. Tom, I see you're lit up around your name, are you, can you hear us now?
No.
Okay. Is there anyone else on there I was gonna say we could check with? By the way, I see if we have some. Thanks very much, and apologize, Barb, for that kind of interruption. I was gonna say, I know Lori, you wanna just, I was gonna say, did you want to get a picture with Barb on the proclamation, do something like that with us now? That'd be great, if you'd be willing, Barb? And we are.
Would you, if you want to do it?
Oh, I was gonna say.
Yeah, come on up here. We'll kind of huddle and you can.
Can I stand in front?
Yeah, no, you're good, that's great.
Okay, everybody in, one, two, three, one more, one, two, three. Great, thank you. Thank you very much.
That's, there's, that's not the one to sign. That's the one that I put my pause marks on.
That's all right, I won't sign it, yeah.
Great. Moving on to claims and payments, this is a resolution that the Board of Supervisors approve expenditures.
No, we need a roll call.
Oh, yeah, we did the motion in second, thank you. So, all in favor, please answer as your name is called, thank you very much, Mike.
Hall?
Yes.
Little? Schwartz?
Yes.
Treoka?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes, thank you. Moving on to claims and payments, resolution that the Board of Supervisors approve expenditures that the county auditor be authorized and directed to issue checks against the various settlement of such claims as allowed.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in seconded, shall.
Good morning, Board.
Good morning.
This morning, I'm asking you to approve $502,395.79 in a total bill payment. It's a little bit less than the report that was sent out Friday, because I have a question about an invoice that I'm still trying to get resolved. The 60-40 fund is $1,833.09. We didn't have too many large and unusual things this week, but we are paying for Mile Rock, as typical this time of year, about $60,000, and then for some seal coating to blacktop service for $103,815.23, and those are really the only significant things today. Other than that, everything appears to be in order.
Are there no further questions? Please answer as your name is called.
Little? Schwartz?
Yes.
Treoka?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes. Item five, receive project updates from department heads and elected officials.
Good morning, Board, Kathy Nicholas, County Engineer.
Good morning.
Want to give you an update on Elk Run Road, as you recall, we closed that a week ago yesterday to repair the roadway above a culvert, and this is just south of the entrance to the northeast site at John Deere. It was north of the Tyson's plant, so that's been closed for a week now, and we are hoping that, we did our last pour yesterday, we're hoping to get it sealed with, to seal up the joints today, and then we're very hopeful, if everything goes as planned, that we will reopen it tomorrow. I know that's been an inconvenience for a lot of truck drivers, a lot of the public, but we are hoping to have it reopened by tomorrow afternoon. And that's about all I need to report today, can I answer any questions at this time? Thank you.
Thank you. Carol? Clint? Tom says he can't hear yet, so just letting you know. No, go ahead.
I'm the FASMIR HR Director, so just wanted to give a quick update, the marketing coordinator role posting closes this Friday, we have about 31 applicants right now, so the HR team's kind of going through those to, right now, we're only really planning to dismiss those that clearly don't meet the minimum qualifications, and then we're gonna provide an update to the board with routing candidates to you all. We can do that in our Civic HR applicant tracking system, where we can provide the information, you know, through your email or hard copies of those that make it through that first round. Again, that would be the, of the 31 candidates we have today, those that meet the minimum qualifications. We'll probably need to kind of discuss alternatives for the board to discuss the candidates, we can do that in a closed session, but I'd have to have authorization from the candidates to discuss them in closed session, or you all can kind of, after you review them, I can give you a couple weeks to kind of give me your top five, seven that you'd like to, you know, interview, or something like that, so. But I just want to bring it to your attention, if there's something that you guys want to discuss, I know you all want to be involved in the interviews, but we may have to, you know, look at other selection processes, or just me as a team, to get to that interview list, so.
Yeah, if we could whittle it down, us as a board, to five to seven, to interview, that'd be.
Yeah, are you, are you just maybe each of us individually send you our top five or seven, and then you see kind of where everybody lands?
I think that would be not a bad place to start, and then, you know, if that doesn't work, we'll see about getting together, but yeah, I would expect we'll probably send you, you know, could be close to 10.
Yeah. Whittle that 31 down a little bit, yeah.
When those, when those are sent, are they sent sort of blind?
Sure.
Or are they sent with, just, you know, from an equity standpoint? It might be, it might be a way for us to consider all applicants equally, without necessarily folks' names, or?
You bet. So what we can do, I, if I route them to you in the applicant tracking, I don't have a way to do it blindly, but that's something that I, we can certainly pull a report of the candidate information, and we can blackout certain information, it would just be, I'd need a little bit of time to do that, but we certainly could provide it that way, it would just be probably like a zip drive or a hard copy with information kind of blacked out, and it would just be, I'll read applicant one through 10. So, we've done that at times in the past, I've done it when I hired my two roles, it does kind of help to have a little bit of objective.
Yeah, I think that's a good way to do it.
So yeah, we're gonna, we have a staff meeting this afternoon to go over the candidates that have submitted so far, but we do plan to close it on September, I don't think we need to continue to leave it open unless that's requested by the board, so.
I'm impressed we've received that many applicants.
Yeah, it's been a good, a good recruitment so far with the interest, we do have 23 that have started an applicant and haven't finished it, so I don't know that they'll all submit it by September 1st, but we may have more.
So that's 31 plus 23.
Potentially.
Anything else, so? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other department heads or elected officials, any online? Seeing none, okay. We'll move on to the minutes being approved for August 22nd, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, there's Tom.
Yeah, he's, yeah. Item seven, consent agenda, the following items are acted upon by a single resolution unless someone wishes to remove them for discussion.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in seconded, please answer as your name is called.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Treoka?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes. Item eight, contracts and agreements, resolution that the County Social Services Region 28E Agreement between Blackhawk County and County Social Services Region be approved and direct the chair to sign for the same as recommended by the Blackhawk County Supervisors.
So moved.
Second.
Great, and thank you, Mary, for being here, so you can explain a little bit of what's going on.
Sure. The reason for the updated 2080 is that legislation made some significant changes over the past session. The primary change that they made was the structure of all of the Regional Mental Health and Disability Services Boards. Previously, our board consisted of one Board of Supervisor from every county in the region. Legislation changed that to no more than 49% of our board could be Board of Supervisors. I'm very proud of our board, though, because they chose to not exclude anybody. What they did is they chose that six counties would be represented this year, the other six counties, because there are 12 in our region, would be the alternates, meaning that they could vote and that they would have that connection, so that they, they were voting on something, they can make that decision together. And then, once we hit January 1st, the six that are alternates will then become the primary board members, and that'll switch every year, and it's been really nice to see that the counties are still involved, because with HHS taking over a lot of what we're doing, it's nice to see the county involvement. As you know, all of our funding now comes through Iowa Health and Human Services, it's no longer levied through the counties, so I really appreciate having the eyes and ears of the counties, because with the regions being so large, it's really hard for me to know everything that needs to be done, so thank you for your support of our board.
I thought that the alternate thing was very interesting, but I said, my only concern with that is about, it looked like it changes over, like you said, January 1st.
It does.
And if there are issues and concerns and things you've been discussing, or that group of six has been discussing, and then effective January 1, the alternates come on board, and how will they be brought up to date on whatever, on something maybe they have to vote on?
Yeah, the wonderful thing is, is our attendance at our board meetings is fabulous. We usually only have one or two board members absent, so the board really is aware of what's going on, and I really make my best efforts to be available if anybody reaches out to me with any questions or concerns. The reason that I think it's probably best, like I said, is because the involvement, other regions in the state just decided, okay, you have the most population, or you've been most active on the board, so we're keeping you, the rest goodbye, and our region really felt that it was important that all 12 counties are represented, so.
While still having a manageable enough, I mean, otherwise, the alternative would be, the board would have to be 25 members in order to facilitate 12 supervisors, that's...
Yeah, and as the CEO collaborative here in Iowa, we did have the state's attorney review that option, because there were some regions that really wanted to go that direction, and we were told that that did not meet the legislative intent, so we weren't allowed to do that, and I understand some regions, it almost ended up like a TV show Survivor kind of thing, almost, and I was really proud of our board, they, they were so gracious and really wanted to make sure that everybody had a voice.
And as, and as alternates, we're still liable to attend the meetings.
Absolutely.
To be engaged, we just don't have a voting.
Both, both groups got to attend.
Absolutely.
As they wish, it's just.
And that's been occurring, so that's been fabulous.
So for the continuity, to your concern, yeah, they haven't been voting, we haven't been voting this, this part of the year, but January 1.
Yeah, and it's nice that everybody does voice their opinions still.
And this is just for one year, or is, will this be like?
It's evergreen. Okay. So likely, once HHS makes changes again, because unfortunately, we know they will, I'll be coming due again with another 2080. My experience and from what I've seen looking at past records, it's about every two years that a major change occurs.
Well, I'm sure your group will discuss it if it doesn't look like it's working well for you, because you've, yeah, had such a strong.
Absolutely.
Group that's been supporting, like I said.
And it's such an important mission, so, yeah.
Thank you, thanks for, yeah, I knew Davis could mention it, but I thank you for being here to explain it, because I just thought, too, I saw that probably that lack of follow-through might be detrimental to the group, too, so that's great.
It would have that potential, fortunately, we have awesome board members.
Great, thank you. Is there anything else?
No, that's all.
That anybody wants to ask, too?
Any questions? Thank you so much.
No, thank you. If this is a resolution, please answer as your name is called.
Treoka?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes. Item nine, other business, motion to receive and place on file resolutions from the cities of Cedar Falls, Dunkerton, Elk Run Heights, Evansdale, Gilbertville, Hudson, La Porte City, Raymond, and Waterloo, calling for a referendum to authorize the imposition of a local sales and services tax at the rate of 1% to be effective on January 1, 2026.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in seconded, Grant, did you wish to say anything about this, or just?
We got all of the resolutions before the deadline of September 1st, and so we're ready to go.
Thank you, this is a motion, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item B, resolution that the statement of completion and final acceptance of work for project paving on Beaver Valley Road and project paving on Washburn Road be approved and direct the chair to sign for same, and authorize and direct the auditor to make final payment in the amount of $30,000, with a total project cost of $2,564,484.56, as recommended by Katherine Nicholas, County Engineer.
Go both.
Second.
Thank you, moved in seconded, Kathy.
Good morning, again. As is customary, I'd like to give you a recap of this, of our project, how the money has been spent and how the project went. So, this was to resurface Beaver Valley Road from Union Road to the west to the Butler County line, so that was about, that was two and a half miles, and then the other piece of this, these were, these were two tied projects, tied in the DOT letting, that is, the Washburn Road project was from Highway 21 over to the east to Highway 218, and that was about four miles long. Just a quick look at the, the pre-project condition of the roadway, so as is normal, these roadways were exhibiting transfers cracking that was most likely caused by thermal cracking early in their life, throughout their life, as is routine, we do seal those cracks at certain increments along its life, three years, seven years, et cetera. Eventually, that, that sealant used in the joints there, it does pull away, over time and water gets into our roadways, we, we start to see some tenting develop, or sometimes we see a raising of that joint, it leads to a poor ride. Both of these pavements were resurfaced in 2020, 2002, excuse me, so 21 years ago. Washburn Road, because it do, it does have a lot of loading from garbage trucks, et cetera, in that portion of the roadway, it was also starting to exhibit some longitudinal cracking in the wheel paths, and so this is a sign that that pavement is wearing out, it's, it's losing its ability to carry loads, structural capacity is wearing out. To remedy this, of course, it was time to resurface it, we wanted to, quote unquote, recycle it, use the existing structure to our advantage, and also, if we recycle the roadway, we can prevent those cracks from reoccurring as, as soon as they would be if we had just placed an overlay on top of the existing surface. So that was our, our method of rehabilitation, was to quote unquote recycle it and then place two lifts of asphalt on top of it. We put the project out, it was awarded, or opened by the Iowa DOT, it was awarded to Aspro by U back in late Novem, early December, excuse me, of last year, for $2.77 million, 50 days were in the contract with $1,200 a day liquidated damages. This project is being paid for with farm-to-market funds, and those are, of course, as you know, funding that comes from that, the Iowa State Gas Tax. Work began in May, it finished on June 21st, only 31 working days were used, therefore no liquidated damages were assessed. You can see the final contract costs were about 7.5% under, so I'm gonna recommend that you approve this project and we be allowed to pay Aspro the required retainers that we withheld throughout the project. Just four or five pictures here now, this is on Washburn, excuse me, this is on Beaver Valley Road going to the west, this was, road was four inches of cold and place recycled, you can see the recycling train here, I've talked to you about this before, some of you have probably seen this, where the, the train goes along, it picks up, it mills up the existing product, the existing asphalt, and it places it back on, through a series of mixers, it reintroduces new binder into that old ground-up pavement, and then it lays it back down again through this paving machine, and so this is the, the old pavement, ground up, with new binder in it, and it's, it's very fluffy right now in this stage, and then it's rolled, and then it has to cure for five to 10 days, and that is to allow some of the moisture to, to escape out of that existing material. After the proper moisture is, has been achieved, then it is time to place the new asphalt, the two lifts of new asphalt. One lift was two inch, and the second lift was one and a half inches. This photo here on the left does show the rolling of the new hot mix asphalt, the HMA, and then in the, one of the final pieces of that roadway work would be to replace the shouldering, because now we've raised the road three to three and a half inches, and we need to replace the shoulder rack. Moving on to Washburn Road, it was a very similar process, this road was only three inches of cold and place recycle, we determine how much to cold and place recycle by the existing structure of the roadway. You can see some of the, the cracking, and so this is what we're trying to prevent from coming back by using that cold and place recycle layer, that kind of cushions the cracking, prevents it from coming back as, as quickly. And then, this, this is on Washburn Road, looking to the west, this would be the Folk Road intersection, as is very typical now, we like to place these 50-foot fillets on our, at our gravel road intersection, so that, for, for several reasons, in the wintertime, it's easier for our snowplow to plow that intersection clean, it allows people, drivers to have better traction at the intersection, it allows gravel from that going out onto the roadway, and then the final, or one of the final activities on this roadway, again, was replacing, refreshing that gravel shoulder, and then this is the final product on Washburn Road, the smoothness, we did have the smoothness specification used on both of these roadways, and they were both excellent, Aspro had really good smoothness numbers, and again, I would recommend that you accept the project and we be allowed to release the retainage back to Aspro. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Any other questions for Kathy? If this is a resolution, please answer as your name is called.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Treoka?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes. Item C, motion to authorize sending a letter to the Board of Directors of Permanent Planning Two, Inc., Permanent Planning, Inc., and Exceptional Persons, Inc., requesting a meeting as soon as possible regarding the lease between Blackhawk County and Permanent Planning Two, Inc.
So moved.
Second.
And moved in seconded, Rory, do you or Mike, either one want to just comment briefly about?
Good morning, Board, Rory Giving, Facilities Director. As you know, a few weeks back, we were discussing the ARPA project, which involved the Health Department, one of the items that, that we're looking at is all of the potential grounds within the Pine Crest area, and so what we want to do is get a discussion going with Permanent Planning to discuss the future of a facility that's placed out on our grounds over at the Pine Crest Facility, so this is a formal letter just requesting that meeting.
And it's probably worth adding that there's a 40-year lease in place for that facility, that lease expires end of June of this coming year.
And as we all know, our timeline, too, to decide on what we want to do with the ARPA funds and the Public Health Department and that type of thing is pretty critical to us, so we want to keep moving and get this done. We've had some conversations, phone conversations with different individuals, but need to get these people engaged with this, too, so. Thank you. And any other questions? It's been moved in seconded.
Rory, is that our house, too?
I'm sorry, I didn't catch that.
Is the house ours, or just the land?
Well, the county, the agreement 40 years ago was with the land, but in that lease agreement, it does state that if the agreement does not extend, then the county may take possession of that land. Now, it does state in there that Permanent Planning can keep their fixtures within that property, but we believe that this does not include the structure. Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay. So, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion is carried. Motion to direct the county auditor to advertise for a public hearing bid opening to be held at 9:07 Tuesday, September 12th, in Blackhawk County Courthouse, on the proposed purchase of two single axle dump trucks and one tandem axle dump truck for Blackhawk County Engineers Department.
Go both.
Been moved and seconded. Any questions for Cathy, or any more? No, right? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item E, motion to direct the county auditor to advertise for a public hearing bid opening to be held at 9:09 on Tuesday, September 12th, in Blackhawk County Courthouse, on the proposed purchase of one tractor with a boom mower for the Blackhawk County Engineers Department.
Somer?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Cathy, any comments? Any questions for Cathy? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item F, discussion of consolidated communications.
That, that's an item I put on the agenda. Because we're, in the, in the probably not-too-distant future, we as a board are going to have to make some decisions. So, I was just curious to get input from the other board members. We did have an oversight meeting a few weeks ago, and many of the mayors are still pushing for the county to take this over, overnight, quite frankly. And I just want to, you know, I'd like to feel the appetite of the board to increase our taxes overnight. In addition to what we do have to adjust them for to provide our services, are we willing to increase them by my estimate of 5% to 10%? And I don't know how accurate that number is, but talking to Michelle, that's very conceivable. And this is an issue that I've been familiar with, that I've been dealing with even before I was on the board, so I have some insight into it. There is a fear amongst the mayors that Cedar Falls is going to walk away from it. And to be quite honest and frank, I just don't see how that's possible, because when I was the police chief of Waterloo, even though Waterloo was paying 70% of the cost of dispatch, we threatened to walk away. And I explored every single option to see if we could do it more economically than what was currently being done. I, I came up with nothing. I couldn't, it's just not doable. If Cedar Falls does find a way to do it more economically, we need to contract with them. I just don't see how it's possible. And if they do decide to walk away, they've got to give us a year notice. If they do walk away, there's actually some cost savings. There's less personnel. It's not going to cost us less, but I just don't see it happening. In addition, there are already 100, about 115, and I shared this in an email, 115 PSAPs in the state. So, if somebody calls 911, the calls go to a, through the PSAP, a dispatch center. Ours happens to be a Consolidated Communications Center. The state actually wants to lower that number. And I believe they're probably going to force it upon us through legislation that we will have to go down in size. The result of that is, the state will not allow, in my opinion, Cedar Falls to have their own PSAP. What that means financially is all the residents of Cedar Falls who are paying that 911 service charge on their landlines and their cell phones, Cedar Falls isn't going to see that revenue. It's going to come to our Consolidated Dispatch Center. And I can't imagine the residents of Cedar Falls would be happy at all with that arrangement, to be paying into it and not seeing any of the benefit. It's just not feasible. I support the Consolidated Communications Center. I'm disappointed that this, that this Oversight Board lacks vision. Because I've been saying for years, if not a decade, we should be working with the rural counties to surround us, to have them use our Consolidated Communications Center to lower the cost for all. I also want to hear from our vendors. Sometimes we get a little too comfortable with our vendors, in my opinion. And I'm saying that after being involved in government, working with private companies for two decades now. I want to hear from Motorola. I want to hear from Raycom. I want both entities, both companies, to appear in front of us and tell us what they can offer us for a price, to see if we can pass the savings on to our taxpayers. There's a reluctance from some of the mayors to do that, and I just don't understand why. So, I would like to hear the thoughts from this board. Judy's here. Based on my experience, I'll answer any questions my fellow board members have. Judy's here to answer questions. You know, I just want to get, the, the cost of dispatch concern me. And I'm just trying to get the best value for, and the best service, so that we can take care of our citizens and our taxpayers. But quite frankly, I just don't see Cedar Falls pulling out. And if they're gonna, let them.
Yeah, I would agree. I, I don't see that they would either. I, I think Waterloo's threatened it, I was going to say in recent years.
That was me.
I didn't mean to say it was you. But I do recall, like I said, that both communities, those two, both have probably explored it in the past. And I would agree with you. I think we seemed somewhat, and I don't know why, I asked the question at that Oversight Meeting, why the push for '25? It was kind of like, okay, they couldn't get it done in '24 without us approving it. And there was, the rush to need more, I, I was fine with. If they needed more information, maybe we all needed to explore some of those things. But that you take the time and explore. You don't just say, we've got to get this done for '25 now. And I still am wrestling with why, when they were so insistent on it being property values that it moved to, and it's moved to that, now they think it needs to go to the county. Because we do have some type of resolution, I think, in place now, even though we had one community that was upset by it. Everybody voted, there was a majority that, that supported the property values, at least going forward from now. Not that we can't change that. But I'm, I'm wondering, Dan, to your, to your issue, is it cost maybe we're looking at, or, and services? Are people unhappy with Consolidated Communications?
I would say no. I mean, you know, I hear complaints from officers, but we as humans complain about everything. But there is a dialogue, and there's representation, or there, the, the fire chiefs and the police chiefs are on a board that has oversight over Consolidated Communications. So, I think the biggest issue right now is, are, are some of our elected officials are complaining about the cost. I'm concerned about the cost. What we need, what do we, what will we do without Consolidated Communications? We need them.
Exactly. Well, I think that was the reason why I wasn't here, obviously, when they formed the Consolidated Communications. But I said that not just the partnership of everyone working together, but because it was expensive to do it individually, and I think everyone saw there was a benefit to doing it consolidated-wise, so we got on board. Now, if there's issues like, that we need to work through, whether that's Oversight, or whether that's the Advisory Group, I'm not sure, and maybe that's where Oversight and they need to work together more. But, yeah, my questions came from, are there, are there costs that we, I think when you looked at Motorola and Raycom and those types of things, it was to take a look at the cost.
Right.
And seeing that those don't get out of line. And I thought, maybe we should be doing a better job at looking at operations and those things that to reduce, or maybe not necessarily to reduce them, but to make sure we're getting the best bargain for the taxpayers.
Yes, I agree. And that's something we need to explore. And I think our Raycom contract is up in three years, I think. We have three more, three or four more years on it. And what I find comical, what's comical, sadly comical, is, you know, every year, this Oversight Board, or I refer to it as the Lack of Oversight Board, gets together, and we're still talking about last year's budget. I've said it before, there's too many cooks in the kitchen. Ultimately, I think that Consolidated Communication just needs to fall under the Board of Supervisors. And the mayors would argue, well, if you want to take that oversight of it, you take up the cost. What I'm saying, my position is, yeah, we're willing to take up the cost incrementally over seven to 10 years. And I'll get together with Judy, Amanda, Mike, and Michelle. We're going to have a meeting before the end of the year to discuss bringing dispatch under the oversight of the Board of Supervisors, under the five elected officials that sit on this board. And I'm hoping what we'll be able to do is bring some solutions to this board and say, okay, what options that we're presenting do you like, and do you think this is feasible, and if it is, let's make a move. But I, you know, since coming to the area in 2010, this has been a frustrating process every single year. And it's, I'm sure it's frustrating for Judy. Because it's, it is like herding cats, that, that old saying.
It, it seems to me like the, there might be some benefit in having actual committees within that board to consider. I mean, when you look at what Scott County did with their consolidated, it, it took them a long time for the county to take it all the way on. That was, what's been discussed in my eight-month tenure has been very immediate action, all or nothing, right? And I think part of that is what you're going to get when you have, what, 13-person?
Yes.
Group, plus, plus, plus five supervisors, all of them elected officials, all of them having the ego of elected officials. No, no offense, because I'm, I'm there with you. So, I wonder if there might be some benefit in having, you know, one supervisor, one mayor of a larger community, and one mayor of a smaller community as a sort of subcommittee to look at multiple alternatives, right? The county, yes, one of them being the county taking it all on. One of them being whatever other options could be, but, but I, I feel like that group is just too big to weigh all of those options and the meetings and just not get completely sidetracked.
I think, I think it's both too big and also unengaged too.
Yeah.
You know, and so, we've got a mayor particularly in Cedar Falls that huffs and puffs a lot, but then isn't at the meeting. And so, it's, I mean, it's really kind of irresponsible rhetoric, to say that Cedar Falls is looking at pulling out, you know. Is that's not, you know, those, those citizens need to know that when they pick up the phone and call 911, they're going to have the service that they rely on today. And so, it's, I mean, I found that kind of frustrating at the last meeting, you know, is there is so much urgency, the thing that we need to meet more often, more often, and then, okay, folks, like, you know, what, what's up? So, it's, the, the questions for me that still linger out there is just, and it's, there's so many moving parts because of all the recent legislation of, of just what, what it does to, to our ability to, to fund our departments and to, to keep up with inflation within those departments alone, you know, because that's going to be, we've got such a tight window on how much we're allowed to grow now. So, that, that's, that remains my concern, and still questions about what a, what a standalone levy actually means, and what that looks like and what that does. I think that's still really gray and murky.
Well, that, I know that, the one question, Chris, about the impact on our ability to levy for other services, that's, has bounced back and forth too, because 10 years ago, I believe I was told that it doesn't impact our ability to levy for other services. It does, we would tax more. And for a while there, and I don't know where I got the information from, but I think from, from another county, we could actually tax TIFs for, but we can't, I've learned. You know, there's a question whether we can tax this as a supplemental levy or not. And it's as clear as mud. And Michelle's, I, I believe it's, it changes with state code.
But it does, and there was a lot of bills that bounced around last year with a lot of options. I think ultimately, none of them passed, but I assume it will be back this year. Maybe I'll find out more this week. But, yeah, there are several options. If you, I'm just going to throw out some numbers. If you wanted to take it over, over 10 years, and I'm using a 400,000, 400, $4 million annual budget, so we would have to add 400,000 to our budget. This is if you did it as a department. Actually, it doesn't matter. If you did it anyway, we would, if you wanted to keep your tax levy the same, we'd have to have taxable valuation growth of 115 million a year, which, you know, last year was negative, partly. And, and I, I just don't, I think Grant would agree, it is very difficult, if not just impossible, to project that. We've, we've tried for years, but when there is growth, the state tends to step in and limit it. And now we have new tax law that I haven't, I have not tried to apply that to this yet, but we, there's, there's several different options. The EMA levy is still out there. That does get added to the county's general supplemental levy. So, your, your rate will jump, you know, as you look at statewide rates. We, we would go up by that, because that's what the current law says it does. Even if you, even if the auditor puts it on a separate line on people's tax bills, when you look at statewide things that the legislators analyze, it'll get added to that. That, if you keep at that EMA levy, which requires, I don't, it, it's interesting legislation, because it, it puts that under a board whose primary responsibility is something else. It's planning for disasters and including people that should work on that sort of thing, not emergency communications dispatching. So, I think there, that's why you've seen places like, and I think Scott County might be one of them, or that area, because it's not just Scott County, created a separate board that kind of runs that Emergency Communications Center, separate from the EMA board, so that you can get more of the right players at that table. For the county to take it over and just add it to our own budget would, would be very difficult. That, that would, we cannot, about one year's worth, we can maybe add to our levy caps. Because if you add it just as our own department, you don't get the EMA levy. So, you'd have to pick up the salaries. You can add a little bit to employee benefits for their employee benefits, but it, it would cause us to bump into caps unless there's significant growth every year in our valuations. So, I know that's a lot of words, and I would show you examples, but I think they'll just be more confusing right now, so.
And it relies on that growth not being further capped by the state.
Yeah, right. That, that's correct.
Is there any other county that does it with a department? You know, we got thrown into this mess last year, and we quickly looked at those five or six communities that were doing the EMA levy. And they all had their own various setup of it. But is there, there's 92 then, other than us, that are doing something different? And our, you know, I just thought of yesterday, I said to Michelle, Lynn, what does Lynn County do, you know, and even our Urban County Coalition? I thought, we'll see them at the end of this week, and it was going to be, maybe to ask some of them. But Dubuque County, you know, what are they doing? And, and it's just what, some of those that are in that same, you know, urban kind of setting as us, that are looking at same issues and concerns.
It, it does appear to me that Lynn County funds it in their budget, but they're different circumstances.
Lynn County actually has three PSAPs. Sorry, I'm out. So, Lynn County has three PSAPs. They have one in Marion. The city of Marion has their own. Lynn County Sheriff's Office has theirs, and then Cedar Rapids PD has their own 911 center. So, I don't know, funding-wise, I would imagine that comes from the county for the sheriff, and the city for the city, and Marion for their city. Woodbury County may be similar, or maybe worth looking into. They have one PSAP, but they also connect with, and I believe when they did theirs, they were, there's a college there that they are actually on college property. They also, I want to say, have some from the state. It's next to it.
Nebraska?
No, it's not Nebraska. It's one of the smaller, Dakota, one of the, yeah. My geography. But anyway, so they kind of, I don't know that it's a regional, but they do have something to do with the college, with the county, and then with, I want to say, one of the Dakotas. So, that might be worth looking into.
Do you know of any that are departments, Judy?
I thought Scott County was pretty close, that it falls under, under the county with an Oversight Board, like the Board of Directors, like our Conservative Board.
None of the six we looked at were, because they were all separate, unique employers.
Dubuque County, now that's gone back and forth. It was either city, and then recently, they flipped it over to be under the county, or vice versa. I can check into that.
Oh, that's okay. I just thought we kind of wanted to explore, I guess, where we go, and that's what I think you're trying to do, Dan, is just find out. And, and really, the supervisors, as far as I'm concerned, I know we're trying to accommodate the Oversight Group, because like I said, that's a group of mayors, as much as it has the same voice as we do here. When we have five on our board, it's all of us have a voice. They all have a voice. And obviously, this last year, they've tried to just run with their voices. And obviously this last year, they've tried to just run with their voices and kind of force us into, I think, what they thought was gonna be a forced EMA at a hundred and fifty percent budget, which was ridiculous, but nobody seemed to think that except for the supervisors. I was gonna say, the mayors thought it was fine until the mayors were, had to vote on it that day, and then they all went back to a hundred and twenty-five percent or less, but whatever. So I just thought it's, it's really up to the supervisors to take the action on dispatch, on where that goes, whether it goes to the EMA or department or whatever. And I know they've been asking, um, as mayors, you know, to explore some of these others. I think that's where they, um, Mayor Kaliska reached out to Rod Sullivan in Johnson County and asked him to do a presentation, so everybody kind of wanted to hear that and thought that was kind of first and foremost on their agenda. Um, when we had the oversight meeting the other day, that was kind of what rose to the top, everybody wanted to hear that. But I thought, the action that's needed to change anything is right here at this board, this level. And so what we do or say or want going forward is really of importance to me.
I agree. I think collectively, the five of us control this ship.
Yeah. I would say, looking back, when Johnson County consolidated, they came up for several meetings with us, cause we had, we were the first one in the state to do the consolidation back in ninety-five. And we probably did a lot of things wrong. There were things that maybe could have done better, so I've consulted with some of those other counties that did it, Scott County. So I think we're ahead of the game in that we did consolidate. And I will, and what Supervisor Chalka said, I was at a meeting at the state with nine-one-one council and John Benson, who I believe is the, um, I don't know if he's the Director of Homeland Security, but he's over the nine-one-one coordinator. And he would came into the meeting and pretty much gave us our marching orders that we need to look at ways to reduce costs because the wirelines are going down, the wireless is going down, the network is costing more. He alluded to the fact that, um, the state did the initiative of shared services where we can share equipment, um, as far as consolidating some of the equipment, which we participated in. We, we did our phone system through the shared services and same services and saved probably hundreds of thousands of dollars by doing that. But what he, in my opinion, gave us our marching orders was that there are a hundred and fifteen PSEPs, and we need to look at more physical consolidation. So in my opinion, I feel the writings on the wall. For him to say that makes me think he probably has the backing of some of the legislatures and definitely the governor. We've talked about this for years of regionalization and consolidating more centers. I believe that Black Hawk County is in a position to be one of the, one of the regional centers because we have worked with the state to become, um, a redundant site for them. We're one of the top ten that have the equipment in place as a, as a backup for the state. So I think we're positioned to do that in the future. But again, I, I think, you know, we, we are ahead of the game with the consolidation. We kind of love the state in that. I would hate to see anybody leave or pull out. Um, I think it would be difficult for them because the state's already told me they're not going to pay to have more nine-one-one lines put in another center when we already have too many. So if another city in our county decided to do that, I believe we would still have to take the nine-one-one call and then transfer it to that city like we did almost thirty years ago when we had four PSEPs in Black Hawk County.
I think, I think Judy raises a really important part that in all these discussions, it's easy to take your eyes off the prize and, and not recognize that this is already, this is a valuable asset, that this is a consolidated communication center already. And it's not always treated as that in the, in these, in these funding discussions because nobody wants to pay for it because budgets are tight. But, um, the other, um, point I'd be, you know, interested in is if we were to take on, um, maybe some other, other counties regionally, um, do our current facilities have room to grow in that? Or would that be a part of that picture too, for that field to happen?
It would depend on what counties. We have had conversations with some of our smaller counties around us for probably over the last twenty years, I've been involved with some of those conversations. Some of the smaller counties, you know, probably would not create that much impact. We have eight positions right now. Based on the work study that you all and the mayors paid to, to have done. We need to get to the point where we have probably at least five working, um, at most times, no less than four. But we would still have those extra councils, though if we brought in several counties, we could staff up to six to eight people at one time. Of course, we don't have the staff to do that right now, but I would assume if you start bringing in some of those other counties, we would have the benefit of those surcharge monies from those counties that I would imagine would come to us.
Yeah, I think Judy, you made a good point, and I think, Chris, you said too, that we were the first ones or the early ones on to do the consolidation. And there are probably things that we maybe took our eye off of too, of how we could improve and how we could be better and how we can save costs and some of those types of things. And I see if, if we're gonna attract others to us to be regional, it's gonna have to be a cost savings to them. It's gonna have to be that they really believe there's value in joining us, they're not gonna do it just because we say, come on in, we think it's a nice regional plus.
My fear and I guess my thought is that eventually, if, if this is coming from John Benson from the state, that we need to start looking at physical consolidation. We were several years, probably four or five years ago, I was with a committee that was looking at other states and how they did regional consolidations of centers. And one of the, um, one of the projects that we looked at, I believe, was in Indiana, where the legislatures actually gave, changed the law that they had so many ti, so many months or so many years, I guess it was years, to implement a consolidation of, um, regional or, of many counties, so it was more like a regional, uh, center. And, and so we looked at that and how, how they mirrored it. And when we looked at the state and how the state is positioned, the, um, the dual redundant sites, it, the path is kind of there. And again, I don't want, I'm not trying to scare anybody or any of the other counties. I'm just saying, in my opinion, I would see the state moving forward with something like that, probably within the next five to ten years, would be my.
Governor's been realigning most of the things already, so I.
Everything's gonna be re-aliased.
It just makes sense. To a point.
Thank you.
To a point.
Thanks. So what you were thinking of proposing, or when you talked about getting together the staff and trying to come up with like options or alternatives, or just the department aspect, or what were you, I guess?
Primarily the department aspect.
Okay. So unless that, like I say, but if that proves to not be something that's doable, then regional is still appealing to you or?
I think we need to keep in mind, that should be part of our vision as we proceed in the future. Cause it's something we've talked about for a decade. And, uh, now I'm sitting in a seat where maybe we can have an impact on that.
Well, I know after your comments and, and that you're reaching out to Motorola and Raycom really from a reduction of cost aspect. I wondered if that wasn't, if the, we as an oversight group weren't kind of losing sight of what we could be doing or should be doing, or at least questions and working with Judy on their budget and that type of thing. I, cause I think the oversight's group's been at an arm's length at best. When you only get one meeting a year and once in a while too, to really be involved or engaged with the budget and operations and that type of thing. I'm certainly open to that.
The oversight's so big, we keep looking back. We're not looking forward.
I think we're all, yeah, mayors are doing mayor's jobs, we're trying to do with supervisors' jobs, and that becomes another additional task.
Linda, I got a question.
Yeah, please, you've been quiet, so we need to hear from you.
Are we, um, doesn't Iowa code dictate who serves on the oversight board?
It dictates who is on the E-nine-one-one service board, but their oversight in regard to finances is only in regard to the revenue generated by the E-nine-one-one service charges. And that's.
Doesn't, doesn't the Iowa code, uh, mention the oversight board on what the makeup of it is?
No, no. And it gets, it, there's so many committees involved in our, in our cons, consolidating communications center in particular, and not only threw EMA into the mix, it gets confusing, even some of the, with members I've seen from the police chiefs, they're confused as to who has oversight over what.
Right. Right.
Correct. The twenty-eighty establishes.
So consolidated communications only exists because of a twenty-eighty agreement between the entities, and that's what says who's on the board.
And that's the mayors and supervisors.
The oversight board.
And then it also created a different group to manage operations, and I think that's where we're really maybe having a communication difficulty is we have two different groups there.
Well, I know even, uh, and Judy and I talked about this a decade ago, every, one, one Wednesday a month, a bunch of boards get together.
Three of them, yeah.
Three or four of them. And they all have the same agenda.
On the same days, you know?
Yeah, same day. Just for clarification, so the twenty-eighty agreement is what Michelle said, is a consolidated board. And they then, um, years ago, changed it to add the oversight board because there was really no oversight of the budget. And, um, I wanna say that was after I took over as director, before, the previous director really had no, no one overseeing the budget. And so we established that there needs to be, the cities need to, and the board supervisors need to have input into that budget. So that's when the oversight board was created.
Who decided that, Judy?
The consolidated board, I think the mayors, you know, they were, in talking to their chiefs that sat on that board, we all felt that, or they felt that there needed to be an oversight board that would oversee the budget part of it. The consolidated board was to oversee operations and personnel, following and following Black Hawk County personnel policies. But that's when they, they added that oversight board.
Do you remember when that was? Just curious.
Well, we consolidated ninety-five. I took over as director in ninety-nine or two thousand, I, two thousand, I guess, is when it was official. So right around that time, because there were some issues with the budget and spending from the previous directors.
And I know all the time I've been, it's, we've only met once, uh, once a year typically, and it's right before the budget to approve it, and that's been it.
Unless there were some other issues, which really they're, you know?
Yeah.
Always, it's always been budget, um, because I understand how that impacts everybody's, you know, there's the cities.
But it really isn't an oversight, it's really just kind of, we get the budget presented and vote on it. I'm, don't you agree?
Yeah, I mean, I.
You present it, I don't mean that you don't.
No, I, and I don't take that badly at all. I mean, I, I put it together, I try to send it out to my board. Well, they, they approve it first, and then it gets sent from there to the oversight board, so, and then they have the final say.
Yeah, we vote. So do we want more oversight? Can we get more oversight? Could we provide more oversight or have more oversight, I guess, of the, of dispatch? Cause like you said, I think the communication, there is a communication with us, with, I know the police and fire chiefs. I don't know that there needs to be.
I don't think the twenty-eighty agreement specifies how often the oversight board meets. It says you're required to approve the budget, but I would think you could choose to make more often, I think we have.
To understand and know, knowledgeable, I guess.
You could certainly set up a meeting.
Any mayor can call a meeting, and the board supervisors could call a meeting. So there's something in the twenty-eighty, if I remember correctly, that says it, meetings can be called other than just that one. Which I think you're doing now, which is great.
But only two mayors, I, I think that the mayors of the two major cities, Waterloo and Cedar Falls, they can call a meeting.
Yeah, I was gonna say, maybe they can, I don't think any mayor.
I think other members may be able to call a meeting. I'd have to go look at it.
Who would chair it?
Well, it's.
Depends on who shows up. They'd still have to have a quorum in order to establish it as a meeting, and they'd still be subject to the limitations on amendment that, that are, lie with the county Waterloo and Cedar Falls. But having said that, they, uh.
I'm not sure, our twenty-eighty doesn't say something different, but that's all right, that's another.
Yeah, I'll have to go, and I don't have it in front of me. The chair of the board of supervisors and call a meeting and either of the mayors of the two major cities.
I'd have to look at it, but I think any mayor can request it. I think the board supervisors.
They can request it.
But we always send it to you, and then the board chair, I believe, chairs it, and this board chair does.
I wanna streamline oversight, cause I mimic what Chris says. I mean, this is such an important issue, and here we don't have mayors participating.
So does the board need to determine a position or stance or direction to?
This says the chairperson of the county board of supervisors may call additional meetings from time to time. In the event of unavailability of the chairperson of the county board of supervisors, any two mayors of the participating cities may call additional meeting. And this is the one dated October of twenty-twenty, it's the first one I found, so that's why I'm repeating that to you.
We should have twenty-eighty more than we wanted to this year.
Yes, um, you'd think I'd have it memorized, but there were too many.
Yeah, you'd think we all did.
So, yeah, so you clearly can call if you wish to.
So Tom, I didn't mean to cut you off, I know we had some discussion then from Judy and Michelle, I think, too. Was there anything else you wanna add or question on that? And if that answers the question, Iowa code, but I'm sure, like I said, you've been quiet otherwise.
No, I, um, the agreement that Johnson County got into, what year was that, Judy? Do you have any idea? It was quite a while ago, wasn't it?
It was.
Yeah, cause you remember it.
It probably was in around two thousand and five, I wanna say, two thousand and five, two thousand and six, somewhere around that area.
Okay.
It was like five years after, four or five years after we did, so, when we were ninety-five, so.
So currently, we have the SEGA's board, the nine-one-one board, and the communication board that meet once a month, is that correct?
Yes.
And then the budget comes to the oversight committee for approval every year.
Correct.
So we're saying we can cut that down, so it's just a few board members or mayor or whatever then, or what?
What I'm saying is we can cut it down to the board of supervisors having oversight.
By being a department, is what you're thinking, right?
Yes, and, uh, you know, and one thing I want to hear from is the board. I mean, if the majority of us don't support that, I'm not gonna waste the effort to get together with these department heads to pursue. But if there's an appetite for it, we certainly will look at it and come back with proposals.
Well, is there a way you could do a short version? I hate for you to spend a lot of time on it and, and we weren't wanting to continue with it. But if, like I say, if there's some selling points of it that you could, you know, and you've gotta look at staffing, and you've gotta look at how we'd run it, I guess, or how it would be run.
I think it's worth it to have that initial meeting before the end of the year with the five of us and.
Yeah. No, as long as I didn't mind just invest a lot of time and then have us say, oh, I don't want that.
I guess it'd be like a subcommittee or committee of the people that understand the operations.
I'm certainly.
And the dynamics.
But I just thought, I don't want you to spend a lot of time on it without discussion, and then us find out that you've spent
I think we can.
A lot of time on it and staffed it and.
I think with these five individuals, we could accomplish a lot in an hour.
Okay, then. Yeah. Took us many hours with Scott County to try to understand what they were doing, so, yeah, but no, that's great. I don't know, what's your, what's the thoughts of at least exploring it at least?
I'm open to it. I mean, I think, you know, to Michelle's point, there were various pieces of legislation that were floating around the Capitol uh, this year that might impact. We'll see which ones get resurrected. But at a minimum, it would be good to have a plan in the event that it is all, I think one of those bills basically did force it all onto the county supervisors, and so it would be smart for us to have those conversations sooner rather than later. I don't like the idea of us taking it, taking on one hundred percent of cost. I, I think that's, that's just unrealistic, um, for us to come up with, which is, I forget, uh, the number I had to tack on an extra four million. It's gonna be really difficult for us to absorb. To anticipate increasing a hundred and fifteen million dollars a year.
Not yet.
Uh, I'd love to be at that point.
Maybe someday, but not yet.
But a county that lost population, the only major counties to lose population growth, um, is, that's probably not the most realistic. And so, um, uh, I'd have concerns there, but I'm open, I'm open to what's possible. Yeah.
There is another county that does this department-wise, I don't know if we could explore that quickly or Grant? I don't know if that's something with base camp, is that something we could even consider or asking?
We, we did some checking like that before, what specifically would you like to ask?
If there are any counties, I guess, that, that handle their dispatch as a department of the county?
Okay.
Can I offer, I, I'm in a network of all PSEPs in Black Hawk, or in the state of Iowa. I can easily.
of Iowa. I can easily send out an email and ask them how, what their structure is and maybe provide that information.
Good.
I hate for you guys to spend a lot of time when I can just send one email and probably get a lot of answers back.
Oh, well, they get a lot of answers. That'd be a plus right there because usually we don't. Sometimes it's tough.
I'll, I'll do that.
Okay, thanks. But I'm with Chris on the, like I say, the impact on us and our departments and our, and our, like I said, as far as taxpayers too, but as far as all that, it's a big consideration on which direction or what directions we go because.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I'm open to all of it. I'm just, I'm just worried about what it does, departments and all those different moving pieces of what legislatures can do, can do over 10 years. And do we grow? Do we shrink and all that during that time? I think, I think maybe the more serious, like the, we should be putting our efforts into this regionalization. Like, I think it feels like there's too many cooks in the kitchen just because they're complaining about the grocery bill. It's like if it wasn't that, it would be, all right. But if we can, if we can find some cost savings by, by taking on some, some other counties, I think that's, I think that's probably the way to sustain this long-term for folks.
And I had that conversation with Judy just a couple of days ago. We're wondering, okay, who would be the point person for that? I mean, Judy and her position with the other directors in the other counties or one of us who have relationships with other?
The cost savings, the part of it? Or savings, you mean?
Yeah. Because if we started, now I, I know some of the other supervisors in our counties that ring us. I mean, we could take advantage of those relationships and just reach out and start the dialogue.
And we did the public safety radio system, didn't we not? I thought we got the finance directors in, our people, or whatever they called. They weren't all finance directors. But I said Waterloo, Cedar Falls County, were they not involved too? Like, and people that typically look at savings and look at how we can reduce costs.
I think we were involved at some meetings with the towers.
Yeah.
When we did the towers and.
Well, that's, we kind of called the public safety radio system. But I was going to say, but it was some of those caused savings for us. I mean, somebody that looks for cost savings and stuff, I don't know. Not that we couldn't be involved too. Does this board feel it's necessary, I guess, opposition, when I asked the mayors the other day, why the push to have to do this for '25? Because it seemed to me that there are a lot of moving parts and a lot of things we want to consider and that type of thing. Before we would ever make a decision, and we said we had budget coming up and audits coming up and all that kind of stuff too. So it was a difficult time to just say, yes, we're going to have this done because typically Judy's budget's supposed to be provided to the county in November. So last year, that went all over the place as we saw and we ended up with the mess we did this year earlier trying to, and we're still working through that. But if this board doesn't see the need or the urgency to me to have it in '25, to start it, to proceed with it, to do all that you're talking about by the end of the year or whatever to, or explore other ideas if some others come up with it. If, to me, if we could take that urgency out of the equation that we don't have to do, just because they feel, because we don't seem to think, any of us, that Cedar Falls or Waterloo or any of these communities are going to pull out of it. So there, that was the only excuse or reason that they gave the other day at the meeting when I said, why '25? Why not take time? Why not make sure we got it right? Why the rush? And the only thing that came up was the fact that they were afraid Cedar Falls was going to pull out and they couldn't absorb that cost when in reality, they won't be absorbing that cost. We won't be doing that service different ways and things. We'll be looking at it how we would work going forward, whether any community pulled out, whether we. But is this board, and I don't mean that we have to take action today, but comfortable at least with us removing that? Because I think that gives them direction to that we're going to take it at the pace we want, we need, we have things we want to explore, and we're not going to push for it for '25. I don't know. Does that make sense? I mean, that we're not just going to hurry through it?
I don't think it's realistic to even consider that we could do this for fiscal year 2025.
I mean, we don't, there's not even a proposal before us to debate. So it's.
No, but I just thought, yeah, they just keep kind of going with that. Like, we wanted to get now meetings set up to hear Johnson County, you know? And I said, yeah, we're fine with that and getting that going. But it's not just like to, yes, we like what they do, now we do it type of thing, that there's other things we're exploring. I'd.
And from my understanding, the other counties who have done it, it took years. It wasn't, it wasn't a light switch. I mean, that's, I've never experienced really much in government that moves at that kind of pace. And so, yeah, I think it's, I think it's probably fair. I think it's fair to say we're considering options, but we don't want to rush into decisions. We want to be thorough. We want to be responsible.
And in one of the oversight meetings, two or three meetings ago, I was clear to the mayors that I don't think this, you're not going to see it from this board based on the feedback I'm getting, what I'm hearing. It is not going to happen. But it came up again at the last meeting.
Yeah. It just keeps coming up, yeah. And I just wondered because I thought, because we are kind of the drivers for this, it's like if there's a board that wants it in '25 or three members or more, that's one thing. But otherwise, we can at least kind of control the timing and the information that we need and need to get and provide back to them. I don't know. Maybe that's at the next oversight meeting that we have that discussion kind of with them that, because I think if they know we're all in agreement at least of going down a track and proceeding, but just not at a.
And I wonder, just to keep things in perspective for everybody that's like involved, is it possible to come up with some kind of estimate of the monies that have been saved since 1995 by consolidating? I know it's like, a lot, I don't know how to project it, but it's a reasonable estimate that we could stand on, like that's, just demonstrate what the fiscal value has been. We know the human value. You call 911 in your most desperate hour, you're not thinking about what mayors are arguing about who's paying for it, you know? So it's.
Yeah. How important it is, but yeah, exactly the value of it? No.
I think to do that, you'd have to have each participating entity come up with their own.
Right.
What the cost would be for them if they were still doing it. The county, I just, I can't imagine we would have information from '95 that would tell me how many, what changed.
You'd have to have some kind of at least average cost if each of these communities was doing it separately. And then there would be a whole lot of potential areas of disagreement as to what those figures could be.
Yeah.
Well, but they can come up, they can come up with their own. I mean, I know Lepore City Police Chief mentioned how many employees he'd have to have if he was doing his own. So I think they'll be able to at least tell you the staffing and what that would cost. They're not going to understand what I'm going to call the infrastructure costs, software costs, that sort of thing. But I think, I'm guessing that primarily savings were probably more staffing, probably. I don't know that. And they could, I'm guessing they could all make estimates of that. And it would be good to remind each of them of what that was, if, what the cause would be if they were still doing it that way.
So did we get what you need for discussion today?
Yes, yes. This was productive. I mean, I feel like this board collectively is reasonable and sensible. We're not saying we're shutting the mayors out completely.
No.
We're saying we want to work with you, but you have to be reasonable with us. And we're working for the taxpayers just as they are. I think what's being driven by this more than anything is the cost. The mayors would like this off their tax walls.
For sure.
It's that simple.
So would we.
So would we, absolutely.
The funny thing, now that it's gone to property valuations, it would be the same exact tax if it was coming under the county. So they just want us to play the shell game to put over here.
Well, that frees up money in there.
The citizens are a little smarter than that.
Yeah.
Yes, I agree.
They're not saying it. I think, I found that interesting that they're not saying that. It's just getting it off their levies and onto us. That's, even though they've been asked.
At the one meeting, I said, I'm all in if you lower your taxes by the amount we have to increase ours.
And one did say they would do that. Or at least we knew a year, I thought so. But we weren't sure we could hold anybody to it, correct, Mike? I think that's why we kind of said you can't hold others to it or you couldn't obligate anybody. So that was as good as the.
And the cities do have some legislative things that are not helping them with their budgets.
And they're not helping us either.
Correct.
I was going to say the same things that we have strains with, others maybe, but different things that, yeah, they're not helping us any.
We're positioned better financially because of how responsible the board has been through the decades.
So are we. And not asking for a vote, but we're somewhat in agreement that we just, we can proceed and down different paths and look at different things and regionalism kind of on board. But it's just like not at the rapid pace of tomorrow.
Right. We have time. We want time.
Are you in agreement with that too, Tom? Because I.
Yeah, unfortunately, time is going to be dictated by solutions and different routes that we go. So it's a massive problem and it's going to take a lot of planning. And I think that'll take care of time itself. But I agree with you, it's going to be past the 2025.
Yeah. Okay. Well, that's good. Like I said, we're in agreement on that at least that we take time to get it right. Okay. Thank you.
Do you want us to talk about any of the other issues that we have in dispatches? The board is up to date on that?
We didn't have it on the agenda, so.
I didn't know if it would fall under communications or not, so.
Because I was going to say, Rory's still here.
No, we talked briefly about it and I think he has maybe a little more of a game plan.
I forwarded your email into the board.
Okay, perfect.
It's given Rory a headache.
Yeah, I know.
And it's not the cell.
It truly was yesterday. I know. He was, he was in on Sunday as well. So, yeah, thank you. All right. Thank you, Judy. Any reports or information from the board? Hearing none? Ask for a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Meeting is adjourned.